Welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting for June 3, 2019. First item on the agenda is the signing of the warrant.
So moved.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Next, we'll take approval of the May 6 and May 14 regular meeting.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next we have approval of the executive session minutes, May 6, May 14, and May 20.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor. That's unanimous on both of those. Next, we have invitation to speak. Is anybody here to speak who's not on the agenda? All right, not seeing anybody, we'll move on to public hearings. We have a public hearing this evening from Lynchris Hotel Corporation doing business as Doubletree Boston Milford regarding a transfer of license. And I'll let you introduce yourself, and then I have some administrative things I need to go through as part of this.
My name is Attorney John Moretti in Democas Law Offices. I'm here on behalf of JHM Beaver Street LLC, which is the applicant for the transfer. And with me is Robert Perkins, an assistant manager at the hotel. Unfortunately, Maureen Lee, who was the proposed manager of record, had a family emergency today, so unable to attend tonight.
Okay, we'll go over her credentials in a moment. This being a public hearing, there's some administrative tasks that need to be addressed. And so, let me, just for the benefit of the public, read the communication that went out regarding the application of transfer license to JHM Beaver Street LLC regarding a change of manager and pledge of license. The Milford Board of Selectmen will act on your application for the above referenced licenses at a meeting scheduled today, Monday, June 3, 2019, at 7:00 in Room 3 of the Milford Town Hall. You're expected to be present to discuss the application with the members of the board. If you're unable to attend in person, please inform me who you are delegating your representation to. Any outstanding local real estate or personal property taxes owned by the applicant, transfer E and the property owner should remain or should be paid in full before the date referenced, and it is responsibility of the applicant to remind all other parties of this obligation. If you are required by state law to provide workers' compensation coverage for your employees, you must submit evidence of said coverage prior to scheduling of the appointment. And with that said, prior to when we receive the application, we reach out to department heads. And just to make sure there are no issues or concerns, the building commissioner obviously indicates that the change doesn't represent any change of use and that there are no violations, building and restrooms are accessible. Town planner indicates no change of use. The collector, town collector or tax collector, indicates there's no outstanding taxes. The treasurer indicates there's no outstanding liens. And fire chief and police chief both indicate no issues or concerns. So with that said, and this being a public hearing, we'll ask if there's anybody here to speak on the issue in a moment, but we'll let you represent your change and change request.
Sure. So, look, it's a pretty straightforward change. The new entity has taken over the operation of the hotel and seeking a transfer of license. There's no change to the premises. It's just strictly a change in new ownership. Maureen Lee was the proposed manager of record for the license. She's actually been at the hotel now for a couple of years, should be like Rob here, a holdover employee. And the last thing we are seeking is a pledge of the license to Needham Bank as they're financing the transaction.
Okay. All right, thank you. That explains it. What you're hoping to do, it does help to indicate that Maureen is an existing employee at the hotel and will be staying with the new entity. I'll go to the members of the board and ask if there's any questions or comments.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman either.
All right. With that said, I'll entertain a motion relative to the transfer of license.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of manager and the pledge of license to Needham Savings Bank.
Okay.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I would also vote in favor, and that's unanimous. We wish you a lot of luck.
Do we do the transfer of license too?
Yeah. That's good. I had said transfer of license, so...
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, I said transfer of license. The motion didn't include it, so why don't we do a separate motion as it relates to transfer?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of license.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'll also vote in favor, and that's unanimous. Depending on who's involved and, you know, the new management would obviously expect that the new representation meet with Board of Health and meet with Police Chief to see if there are any particular concerns, if there have been any concerns over time, look at the history. I don't expect there would have been, because I haven't seen anything on reports, but there may be some things to pay particular attention to that may be unique to your establishment that would be a great start for the new entity.
Okay.
And then, from that, the only thing I can say is we wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Before the folks leave, is there any, I see folks here that I know are here, and why? Nobody here to speak on behalf of the public hearing? If there is, we'd entertain that now? Okay. With that said, we're all set. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have scheduled appointments, Portuguese Club regarding the annual picnic. Evening, Chief.
Evening, Chief.
That favorite time of year again. Seems like it came up fast. All right, anybody can start?
The annual picnic is scheduled to take place on July 20th and 21st, third Saturday and Sunday in the month. The hours are as they've been, Saturday 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., Sunday 12:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. The music on Saturday will stop at 12:15 a.m., and on Sunday it will stop at 10:45 p.m. At this point, as far as the parade goes, the Portuguese Club is not going to schedule a parade. However, it's my understanding that the mayors are going to do a shorter parade up in the Heights area, so this particular permit will cover that as well. As far as on the ground, again, there's 10 police offices and two sergeants will work on both Saturday and Sunday. There are two during the day, two officers during the day. And then, the bracelets, again, a station will be set up where people can show their identification and receive a bracelet as an indicator that they have had their ID checked. Two beer wagons out in the lot where they've been in the past. I've met with the president of the club immediately after last year's Portuguese picnic, and then subsequently during the year, as we took a look at, you know, the processes and how we handle things and licenses themselves. And Joe has a comfort level. I know he's gone back to the offices of the club and discussed these issues. So, he has a comfort level with the requirements of the permit.
Okay. I didn't compare it to last year. Chief, any changes? I didn't do a was-is comparison, so I just...
The only change is the parade route was changed last year. It wasn't in the permit, but it was changed from Sacred Heart parking lot, municipal lot, up to Winter Street. So, that's why it's in there as Winter Street, as being the starting point. The route that my understanding of the mayors want to utilize, based on discussion with Joe, is within that parameters of what's in that permit as it is.
Okay. Yeah, because the permanent obstruct does say, right, St. Mary's to Portuguese Club via Main and Water Street. Okay. I'll open it up to board members. Any questions, comments?
Oh, I consider this pretty routine. They cover all the bases, so I'm comfortable making motions to approve when questions are done being answered.
Okay, Mike?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, real quick. Chief, so what is going to be the new parade route? I know it's a shorter one, but it's going to go from...
The parade route, my understanding, and I've not had a discussion with the mayors, I did discuss with Joe, and Joe advised me that they will actually leave the club parking area, come out onto Mystic Lane, because that gate is open during the picnic times. And from Mystic Lane, they'll come onto Water Street and go up to Prospect Heights and over to the Memorial, as they've done in the past. So, they will go down Prospect Heights and loop around to the Memorial, where they hold a short service, and then back to the Portuguese Club parking area.
Oh, okay, thank you. I thought you said they were going to, they're not going to be on Main Street?
No, my understanding is no.
Okay, okay.
The route that's there was changed from a number of years ago. We changed what, last, two years ago, right? So, rather than come from Sacred Heart parking area, it's just easy to come out of Winter Street, is what it really came down to, right? When you're trying to move large vehicles and people marching, so that's why it was moved up. It was a safety concern.
Thank you. I would second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
There isn't a motion yet, just...
I thought you made one.
No, he said he's willing to make one.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
There's going to be a few of them.
I get messed up. You know what? Based on this, you know, I'm not even sure what permit to obstruct we would be approving. So, I don't know if we should have the mayors redo the permit to obstruct. I'll throw it out to the board members to see how they want to handle it.
Mr. Chairman, I do think that just approving what's in front of us covers the basis, and we can finalize it. Obviously, being a part of the organization, I know at the last meeting they talked about what the chief just referred to of shortening the route. Now, if the new mayor's finalizing details or working with the Portuguese delegation to, with the club, I'm not aware of that, but obviously, there's been some communication, so maybe something's been decided. So, we can certainly tighten it up, but it certainly covers the route. It's going to only be a reduced route. And switching over to St. Mary's, I think, helped out a lot. That was, that was a big benefit over the last couple of years.
Sure. Okay. So, you know, as a chairman, I'd just like to echo some of the comments I've made previous. I've made this vote a number of times. You know, I think that you've worked well with the police department, worked well with the chief in order to reduce incidents that might otherwise come from a two-day affair. I know that you're trying to hold a safe cultural event that involves music, traditional dance from Portuguese traditional dance. And for that, we're appreciative of what you're doing, and we obviously, you know, our role in this process, along with public safety and the chief, is to make sure that it's safe for the general public. There are a lot of things that, as you know, happen in the background. The monitoring of other streets and parking lots, which the chief has talked about previously. You know, folks coming into the event, not having gotten alcohol served to them at all, where you folks have to be mindful, police officers have to be mindful of folks walking in who are already impaired. So, we appreciate the experience, we appreciate the flexibility, and we appreciate the cooperation. Having these cultural events is very important to the community. I know, for one, I always appreciate the going for the Saturday and the dance, and so I just want to say thank you. So, with that, I'll entertain motions.
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the application for one-day all alcoholic beverages license for both Saturday, July 20, and Sunday, July 21, for the hours that are represented in front of us.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would vote in favor. That's unanimous.
I'd also like to make a motion for a one-day entertainment license for both Saturday, July 20, 2019, and for Sunday, July 21, for the hours represented.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor, and that's unanimous.
And I'll also make a motion to issue a permit to obstruct.
Okay.
Or Sunday, July 21, 2019, 2:00 p.m., for the parade route presented to us or reduced version of it.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, also vote in favor. That's unanimous. I wish you lots of luck and great weather. We know that, we know that it takes a lot of planning, and the last thing you need is rain, so we're all going to keep our fingers crossed to make sure you get the great weather. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have on scheduled appointments, we have Attorney Antonellis. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening.
This is regarding Birch Street S petition.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the help.
It has a long history. I notice a lot of names I haven't seen in a long time.
Yes. The unique aspect of this is that the, a lot of the land on Birch Street is actually registered land, and therefore sits on the other side of the Registry of Deeds, the side for which much, much scrutiny is involved. My clients, TSS Realty, own a very large structure down there that's been used as a test, it's test site services. They test multiple types of instruments and machinery. It's a very solid building, and they've, they're in the process of looking to find their way to retirement, and had an opportunity to sell a portion of the land to Eastland Partners, to Logan Huffman's group, and they want to do a small office building there. And in order to do a subdivision plan on land court property, you have to have it approved at the land court by the land court engineers, and it came up that the town has made multiple takings along Birch Street, which have never been reflected in the plan. So, in order for the land court to approve the plan, they need you, as the Board of Selectmen, to know that you've already taken some land on Birch Street, and what you think was that lot's not that lot anymore. So, the petition has been prepared, the plan has been reviewed at the land court, it's waiting for your approval. Spent some time talking to Rick about it, and also to Charles, and went over it with Charles, and I think that they both approved it as the form and substance. And upon your signature, it'll be signed by the two principals, sent off to the land court, and hopefully, we'll have a new plan that we can record, and my client can sell some of the property.
All right. With that, I'll let Rick weigh in. Any comments or thoughts as it relates to...
No, I also reviewed it. I did speak with Charles. He has familiarity with this process. I'll be honest with you, I've never done one before, never been involved in one, but we're confident that the board can sign it and approve it.
Okay. Why don't we do this, I'll ask that, any motions, if any motions are in the affirmative to approve this, before I even go to questions, I'd like, just to be able to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board, just so it doesn't have to require...
I'll gladly make that motion.
But first, I'll go to questions and comments.
No, I actually half joked with Attorney Antonellis on the way in that this was something I've certainly never heard of, and I learned a lot on the train riding, reading, reading this this morning. So, I certainly am well aware of what's now trying to take place, because I certainly didn't know what an S petition was at the beginning of this process. But I don't, I don't have any questions. It obviously makes perfect sense to move forward.
Mr. Kincaid, there are many members of the bar who would take the same position you have, that they don't know what they are either. They're rare, so... I just wanted to note, before I go to Mike, that the original takings that went before town meeting were signed off and approved by John Bisiella, Marie Parenti, and Harris Trudeau. So, that's how long ago it was. Mike, any questions, comments?
Just a quick question, Joe, if you don't mind. Is this, what you're saying, actually land that the town has acquired?
Yes.
That basically, we really didn't know that we had acquired?
You, they know, you acquired it for the widening of Birch Street.
Okay.
But it's never been shown on the land court plan, so the land court plan that affects this parcel still shows the property line stretching out, so to speak, further into what would Birch Street. And the land court won't do anything that's not exact, so when, when you submitted it, you have to submit a title examination. The title examination shows that there are taking on Birch Streets. The land court says, okay, well, now we have to make sure those are correct on the plan, and we need the selectmen, therefore, to acknowledge that you have more than you thought you did, actually, so...
And just one more quick question. How does that happen?
Pardon?
How does that happen? It just slips through the wayside?
Oh, yeah, it just sits there, because when the town took it, it's, you know, they didn't go out and get a new plan, they just widened Birch Street according to what they had taken. And, and, you know, and that's fine, and the land court was fine with that, but, but they won't issue a new plan, because when, when a new owner takes land in the, in the registered land section, it has, it has to be exactly what the land court approved the last time. And if it isn't, then a new plan has to be, and again, not just signed by the planning board here, then reviewed by the land court engineering department. And it's, it's a, it's a slow process, to say the least. Okay, so it's straight. The other time you might end up with an S petition is if someone in the family dies, and there's like some kind of a missing person along the way, and so to get a, or, or you want the S petition, you want, you want to be able to transfer, you might have to get that approved by the land court, you'd have to file a death certificate, and that you use the quote-unquote S petition. I don't even know what the S stands for. I really don't.
Slow.
Slow. That's very good, right? Slow. But I know my clients are very anxious to get on with their, with their near-retirement plans, so...
And it's just going to show the, what was, what is actually exist, in existence today.
Exactly, so they, so that whoever's buying the land will know that they're not getting the land that's shown on the old plan.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make two motions. The first one is to, I guess, to use the proper language, give our assent to the revised plan, and more, and approve that. So, that's the motion to, that they obtain our assent to the revised plan, and obviously, we vote to approve it.
Okay.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous.
And the second motion, as you spoke about earlier, I'll make a motion that the chairman can sign on behalf of the board.
Okay.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous.
Sure, just go ahead.
If that's the case, as I'm thinking about the exacts of the land, of the land court, they're probably going to want me to bring in a certified copy of that motion.
It's easier just for us to sign that. Do you have it tonight, by the way?
Yeah, it's right there.
You sign this one?
Yes, sign that one, the one that I spelled right.
Okay, then I'll, I'll rescind the second motion.
All right.
Only because it might be more, might be more work for you.
That second motion has been rescinded. You vote in favor of that, rescind?
Rescind, yes, I do.
I also, I do...
I thought you were doing them a favor.
That's what I thought.
I got a little, they're crazy. They're very, they're very exacting in their, excuse me.
George, you just want to make sure they're signing the two places?
Yes.
Right, it's two places? It's the second page after that, Mike?
Thank you.
And then there's another one. Excellent. Should be a place for three, and then there's, there'll be a second one after that.
Not too bad.
Other one in the back, Joe?
No, just flip over that page, Mike.
Right, there we go.
There should be another one, yeah.
Light agenda tonight, gentlemen.
Long agenda, but it's certainly, it's certainly flying.
Oh, okay. I don't see anybody else. Somebody else to bother you like I can, so...
No bother, Joe, always good seeing you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
In all fairness, we haven't seen you for...
I know, I haven't been in a while. Trying to keep everybody calm. Okay? It's not easy.
Do that?
I know. I'm having a hard time staying calm myself, so...
All right, there, and then two pages back.
Okay, great.
It's not always neat and orderly, the meetings, and sometimes we interrupt for signatures because we understand the urgency at which we just, that you want to operate, and if we can do this now and not end up a bureaucratic roadblock for you, we're happy to do that. And we'll give that back to Rick. All right, I think you have the signatures, votes, and everything you need?
Appreciate it.
Joe, let us know. Good to see you. Enjoy your summer if I don't see you.
Good night, Joe.
I'll take it. I'll make copies for you, okay? And then I'll make copies when it's fully...
All right, next on scheduled appointments, we had Highway Surveyor.
Thank you.
Was scheduled to meet with us regarding MassDoc Complete Street Program. My understanding is Mr. Chris Safouli would like to get some more information before he approaches the board, and that's fine. So, we'll skip over that, and we'll go directly to the town administrator's report. Rick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Four items tonight, Mr. Chairman. One, first, the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance. I received notice from Representative Murray that the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance has issued a request for proposals seeking to lease space in the Milford area. They're seeking approximately 6,400 square feet of usable area for space to be used for client services and offices. The space will be used by the Massachusetts Department of Developmental Services. The deadline for submissions of proposals is June 19, 2:00 p.m. The RFP can be viewed and downloaded from the state website, COMBIES. If anyone wants any further information, please feel free to contact me, and I can assist them in that. Second item, the police station floors. I believe I was asked to look into when we would be replacing the floors at the police station that were damaged to the, due to the water overflow, I think, a couple of months ago or so now. I am advised that we have, we have hired a contractor, and we should be done within the next few weeks completing the flooring at the police station. The third item is a notice from Eversource. They have, they are scheduled to begin replacing existing wooden structures and hardware on selected poles along the electric corridors in Milford. The structural replacements will take place in the right-of-way off of Beaver Street. Some residences and businesses on Beaver Pond Road, Maple Street, and Technology Drive are in close proximity to the right-of-way, but their crews will not be accessing the work area through these streets. Site preparation for this work has already begun. Replacement work will begin in early June and be completed by mid-July. A letter has been handed out to property owners, and Eversource is also doing door-to-door outreach as well to make sure they're properly informed. And finally, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we received a request from Jamie Lucchini, Chairman of the Vernon Grove Board of Trustees, seeking to release up to $6,000 from the Avis Pond interest account number 8243 to pay for unexpected expenses in their groundskeeping supplies line item. As the board knows, this account has been utilized in the past to make up for deficiencies in their budget due to an overabundance of internments, small capital purchases, or to balance their year-end budget, which is the case in this, in this situation. We'll ask the board to review and then vote to approve this request. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any comments or questions relative to the town administrator's report?
I do not, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
The only one I have, Mr. Chairman, Rick, when you referenced the floors at the police station, it must be downstairs, was that the flood from the sewer?
Yes, correct.
The backup in the sewer?
Correct.
So, it's the downstairs?
The downstairs, yes. I think they're the weight room and...
Yeah, the locker rooms in the gym.
Locker rooms, that those type areas.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's the only question I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I don't actually have a question, but I do want to, rather than just say a general thanks, I brought that issue up about the flooring two weeks ago at the meeting, and I appreciate it, because Rick got right on it, and I knew within, I think, the next day or two days later that it was, it was being handled, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Rick. So, with this, the town administrator's report, one of the items needs a vote, and that's the release of the $6,000 from the Avis Pond interest account number 8243.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, and before I vote, you know, I think the deficiencies associated with this particular Vernon Grove Trustees account is, you know, it's one of those things, budgeting the number of people that pass and the number of internments is, is not always exact science, obviously. You go by, you know, historical data, you go by information, and sometimes that information in, in past years is not always reflective of what happens this year. So, I'll also vote in favor, and that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Old business, we have nothing on the agenda for old business, but I'll go to the members and see if they have anything under old business?
I do not, thank you.
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Under new business, I'll go through the Milford, Milford Lions Club permit to obstruct. There's an application in here for permit to obstruct. John Minicello sent us a note for, from the Milford Lions Club as the project chairman. He writes that Penny's Facet is a program developed by Lions International to raise money for mass ion ear research.[1762.48] The Milford Lions Club last year donated $15,000 to help cure blindness and its related disease, related causes. As part of that effort, the Milford Lions Club would like to conduct a toll road in Milford on September 28th, 2019, with a rain date of October 5th, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And so they request permission to set up three collection points at the intersections of Route 16 and 109. And obviously, with safety in mind, traffic cones will be set up to give a safe area on sidewalks and islands for lion club, lion members to stand and request donations and all collections, all collectors will be wearing yellow Day-Glo safety vest. And it talks about toll road would be announced with signage to give motorists prior notice. And it's signed, request for this is signed by John Minicello. And the request, the formal application's been approved by the police chief. It's obviously something we've done before and been able to conduct safely. So with that, I'll accept any motions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the permit to obstruct the intersection of Route 16 and Route 109 for September 28th, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. with a rain date of October 5th, 2019.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would also vote in favor, and that's unanimous. All right, next, we have appointment for program coordinator at the senior center. This is a little twisted explanation, so I'll let Rick go through it.
Okay. Board, I'm sure recalls that February 6th, Sue Clark, senior center director, made a recommendation to hire a new program coordinator. Board approved that recommendation. The individual began on March 4th. Unfortunately, due to personal reasons, the individual was not able to do the required schedule and offered her resignation effective May 17th. We had received nine applications at that time, they narrowed it to three. At the time, there was a second candidate that was very, very strongly considered, but was the second runner-up, so to speak. We did consult with town council, we did consult with the personnel board whether or not we would have to repost. And because we have not filled with a fully trained employee, we were advised we could consider, Sue could consider, the prior approval of applicants. Also involved was our HR Director, Maureen Giffen. Therefore, the board would like to recommend Deidra Riley Thompson for this position. Her resume is attached, I believe, to the letter from Sue. If approved, she would be placed at Level 2 Step 1 under Article 2 with a starting hourly rate of $21.69. They also ask that she be allowed to begin working as early as tomorrow, June 4th.
So with that, I think we've got a full explanation of how we got here. And the request specifically is to appoint Deidra Riley Thompson to the position of program coordinator, starting at Level 2 Step 1 at $21.69, and to begin work as early as June 4th, 2019. Is there a motion?
There's a motion to approve and to appoint Deidra Riley Thompson.
Okay.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Good job working with the various boards, Rick. Next, we have town administrator regarding the award of a bid for the youth center.
Yes, the youth center went out to bid for the Dance Experience Room. It's gonna be a build-out. Town engineer Mike Dean oversaw the bidding process. He was the individual who opened the bids and helped prepare the bid package. The youth center director is asking that the low bidder be, ordered the bid contract. The bidder is E5 Builders LLC. They're at 45 Granite Street in Lemonster. They were three bids, they were the low bid. The bids ranged from the low bid of 46.6 to 130,500. Again, Mike Dean, I wanna thank him for overseeing this project and being involved in this project. And he has reviewed and approves, all the requirements of the bid were met by E5 Builders LLC.
All right, so at this time, I'll entertain motions to approve the Dance Experience Room build-out. Bitter at, as E5 Builders LLC, at the amount of $46,600, which also happens to be the lowest bidder. So it's the most compliant and the lowest.
So moved.
And I would second that as well, Mr. Chairman.
Would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Okay. Next, we have some acceptance of gifts. The first one is for the Fourth of July Parade, made by Lioch Properties Group. Joshua Lioch for the amount of $200. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve, or to accept, excuse me.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous, and as customary, a letter will go out. Next, and I'll read these. This is for a total of $570, accepting, to accept gifts. You know what, Rick? This says total 826, is that including the?
That includes the cash below, which is interesting.
Okay.
Yeah, it's including the cash.
Yes, that all totals 826, yeah.
826, okay. All right. And so the, accept a motion to accept from Dinner and Company check for $100, Carl Bright Insurance check for $100, Wheat is the name on the check for 20, Ryan Fatman in the amount of $50, Red Heat Tavern $50, and Milford Federal Bank check for the amount of $250, totaling $570. And I'm gonna guess that there was various miscellaneous donations at events.
Yes.
That total up the cash donation of $256.
Correct.
Okay?
I'll make a motion to accept the total contributions of $826 to the Milford Fourth of July Parade.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have a request by the chief of police to dispose of surplus vehicles. And I'll read them, but I will not read the VIN numbers of each of the vehicles. This is from the chief of police to the board of selectmen. I respectfully request permission to dispose of eight surplus police vehicles by sealed bid process. The first one is a 2003 Ford Windstar van. Second one is a 1991 Audi A4 Silver Wagon. Third one is a 2003 Honda Accord sedan, gray. Fourth one is 2001 Ford Explorer XLT SUV, black. Fifth one is a 2001 Ford Tourist sedan, black. The sixth one is a 1997 Ford Econoline van. Seventh one is a 2000 Volkswagen Golf Hatch, green. And the eighth one is a 2015 Ford Tourist sedan, white. And all having the associated VIN numbers that I did not read off.
I'll make a motion to dispose the eight surplus police vehicles that you just stated.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And I would vote in favor, that's unanimous. Okay, next we have in front of us, still continuing under new business, we have a letter from Susan Edmunds, library director, to the town administrator, asking that the permit fees associated with an estimated cost of $75,000 be waived. And it's waived so that they can begin the Leonard Allen Hill Memorial Park and Middle Garden Hill revitalization project.
I'll make a motion to waive the permitting fees.
Before I vote, Mr. Chairman, Rick, do you know what the dollar amount is that we're waiving?
On the actual fee, I don't, I don't know. Off the top of my head, I don't.
It should be a couple hundred bucks, right?
Probably.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know the exact amount.
Yeah, and for the benefit, you know, this is a thing that happens.
I just want the general public to know.
Yeah, and that's a great point, Mike. You know, I like letting the general public know, for anybody who happens to be watching at home, the waiving of permit fees to other municipal departments simply prevents us from pushing money back and forth through accounts. And it really is an administrative burden that's larger than the fee associated with the cost. So it's very common that when other municipal departments are having a project going, that they would be subject to the same permits and fees as any other private citizen. And we're waiving those fees so that we not go through the bureaucratic process of pushing money back and forth between departments.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, too, that, you know, just from a level of scale, we've waived them for building projects like schools and things of that nature. So this is literally.
And if we charge the fees, the taxpayers are simply gonna bear the burden of those charged fees. So I, just to catch up, we have a motion.
I second.
You have a second? I also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have a request that went through Rick Velani, town administrator, from Alexander Ortega of 91 Purchase Street, and specific, specifically was asking for a hidden driveway sign as well as a no-turn-on-red at that intersection near his home. The chief, his correspondence to town administrator, giving us guidance this evening, says, saying that he agrees with Mr. Ortega, that an installation of hidden driveway sign with an arrow on Dill street indicating that there's a driveway immediately upon turning onto Purchase Street would be helpful in giving motorists making the turn a fair warning, thus increasing the safety for Mr. Ortega to enter and exit his driveway. However, he's not going so far as to recommend no-turn-on-red, and he has several reasons, all relating to safety, which the chief doesn't view that as prudent at this time. So with that, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the hidden driveway sign with an arrow on Dill street. Okay?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have a decision from the dog hearing officer, which also happens to be town administrator, Mr. Velani. And Rick, if you could, no reading, you know, I don't think there's need to go through the findings of facts. I think that your, the recommendations speak to the issue of a concern by a neighbor about a dog, and I think your findings of fact are well reasoned, but I'll let you read those. I mean, I'm sorry, your recommendations.
Yes, the hearing was held on May 28th. People complained, it was Anne Marie White alleging that a dog owned and harbored by Dora Gisela Mendez was vicious disposition, excessive barking, disturbance, and annoyance. After hearing, after hearing testimony from witnesses, receiving several exhibits as part of the record, I make the following recommendation. The name of the dog is Victoria. That Victoria or any other dogs owned by the Mendez family should not be allowed outside from 9:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. If any dog needs to be outside during this period, it shall be accompanied by an adult member of the Mendez family and on a leash. If any dog barked during this time, it shall be immediately brought inside. During the daytime hours, if the owner of the dogs in the Mendez household is not at home, any dogs are to be kept inside the home. Victoria or any other dogs owned by the family shall not be allowed outside, either on or off of the Mendez property without being on a leash and accompanied by an adult member of the Mendez family. If Ms. Mendez is found in violation of this order, Victoria shall be subject to seizure and empowerment by the Milford Police Department and/or Animal Control Department, and further, she would be ordered to immediately surrender to the Milford Town Clerk, the licenses and tags in her possession, and could be prohibited from licensing the dog within the Commonwealth for five years. This finding, as required, will be reported to the Milford Town Clerk in accordance with General Law Chapter 140, Section 157H. And that is the decision after the hearing.
And Rick, what I get from this, and I wanna thank you. This is often a thankless job, being the dog officer, but your recommendations, simply stated, are follow the bylaws, keep your dog on a leash, and if your dogs are getting noisy, please bring them inside.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's overly burdensome. And I'll entertain motion to accept the findings of the dog officer and record this document.
I'll make that motion to approve and accept.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Okay, anybody have any new business for the board?
I do not. I do not.
Okay. Next, we have correspondence. We have a resignation from Finance Committee member Mike Sciavi. And Mike writes, Dear Chairman and, Dear Chairman Warren of Finance Committee and Chairman Buckley, Town Government requires active participation in the community at all levels, constantly renewed with each generation of citizens to remain engaged and vibrant. With this in mind, I realize that as the calendar turns to 2019, my service on the committee has entered its 15th year, and it's time for a change. Please accept my resignation. Member of the Milford Finance Committee affected the end of this fiscal year, 30 June 2019. He further writes, it's been an honor and a privilege to have served these many years with such a fine group of respected individuals. I wish the continued success of the Finance Committee and its mission to keep Milford fiscally sound. While addressing the needs of the community, I applaud the leadership of the board of selectmen and its vision to keep Milford a great place to live, work, and raise a family, and a place to proudly call home. And that sincerely, Mike Sciavi. Yeah, I'd just like to say something before we go through the procedural process of motions. You know, anybody that serves as a volunteer for 15 years on the FinCom, who is really a filter, a filter for town meeting, a filter for this board, who has to work through processes, whether it's to buy, rent, what's the best financial options available to the town, budget negotiations, budget discussions, is a pretty thankless job and a very detailed job. It's a big committee, so being active, being assertive, getting your mind share in the process is not always easy. But Mike did it with respect for the process, for the chairman, any given chairman, he served under multiple chairmen. And he had the thankless, sometimes difficult job of working with the school department, and sometimes not always in agreement with the direction they should go. But he worked through that process, and he was a great listener. So, you know, he's not going anywhere. We thank him for his service to the community, and I know members would like to weigh in. I'll go to Will.
Yeah, no, I served with Mike Sciavi for the years that I was on the FinCom, and he was always a gentleman and always very knowledgeable, so that's a loss. So sad to see him go, but I understand.
Okay, Mike?
I think it's important, Mr. Chairman, is that you realize when you get involved in local government and you have dealings with the FinCom, it's really, some nights it's a thankless job. They're in a very tough position in the decisions that they're making. And it's people like Mike Sciavi, as all members of the committee. But, you know, Mike is a class act, just a very knowledgeable individual, and he will surely be missed. But I also applaud him for, in his letter, as you read, he realizes that going into his 15th year, he personally feels that it's time for a change. And I give him a lot of credit, because there aren't a lot of people that have the ability to do that, you know? But for him to just realize that, you know, it's time for a change.
Yeah, and I think one of the difficulties we have is we wanna have, we wanna have people serve that are knowledgeable in finance, have the skill sets to be able to do that. Frequently, those are CPAs, the people that work in finance and work in accounting. And as it turns out, in preparing our town budget, it happens to be at the very peak of their season, when their clients are very demanding, as they should be, because they pay those firms for those services. And it's a, it's a very difficult balancing act, as all of us realize, that, for those of us that have other jobs, that you have to balance those needs, all the information that's being given to you by the various departments, and manage through that, and he's done that very effectively. And as I said, with respect to the people that he's worked with. So, no, I think it is big shoes to fill. So what I'll do is I'll ask that the board give me some guidance as to how we wanna go about filling this. I just wanna say, as a reminder, that this, this board has appointed an individual waiting for the acquisition of the water company where Phil Ziermaoli could not serve. As it turns out, with that delay and the change in process that we went through with the DPU, we have somebody who's really being held over, waiting for that to happen. And I don't know if there's a better time to just make that move and look to backfill Phil when. when, when and if Phil has to resign, because he couldn't serve in both, um, nor would he want to, by the way, nor would anybody, that's a lot of work. So, um, I wanna get guidance to see if the board's so inclined to make that appointment, or do you wanna refresh the candidate pool? How, how, how do you wanna take it, Will?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll just add, I mean, I, I, I appreciate the reminder, because the board did make a commitment to Brandt Hornberger, that he would, um, he's been waiting now for what seems like a very long time, when we thought the water company decision was gonna, gonna, uh, go a lot more smoothly, um, during negotiations than it had, so I certainly would like the board to, to keep its commitment to, to do that, since we're on record of that, um, and, you know, I can certainly do that tonight, I, that wasn't certainly anything I was planning, I just wanted to make sure we had some appreciation and kind words for Michael...
Yes.
...after serving fifteen years, but whereas Mike also has, has, again, even being a gentleman in the resignation process, is lining it up perfectly when we make all of our other appointments, so, whether I make a motion tonight to appoint Brandt Hornberger, uh, to fill the vacancy created by Mike Skiavi, or we do it at the time when we make all of our other appointments...
That would be my preference.
...either way, but I'm glad you brought him up, because that's who I would be supporting anyway, because this board made that commitment, now, what, over a ye- a year ago, if not longer?
Yeah, it's probably about a year and a half ago, do you remember that?
Yes.
So, uh, yeah, it's really a pull-in if we choose to do that, and I'm not trying to, you know, steer the board, I just, this is a very awkward, uh, process where we went through, um, mediation to get through the Milford Water Company, and the process changed at the twelfth hour, where we ended up having to go through the Department of Public Utilities, where we already had people lined up to, to, to move...
Transition.
Yeah, and, uh, to, to overlap, and I know, uh, you know, um, well, in any event, why don't we take this up, and Rick, why don't we show it as a, you know, show it appropriately as an opening, um, and I think members of the board have kinda telegraphed the direction they'd like to go, and, uh, we can take it from there, and we'll do, we'll do this, I don't wanna go off agenda.
Yeah, it'll be next meetings, uh, your annual appointments, yeah.
Next meeting, that works.
I think that would, I think that would work.
Can I, can I make a motion to accept Michael Skiavi's resignation with regret?
Yes, and I would second that. I would also vote in favor of that unanimous, and his services and his disposition and temperament and his talent will be missed. Next, we have, uh, a letter from Jennifer Demange, uh, indicating that Ronnie Ozier, Ronald Dozier, has resigned from the Library Board of Trustees, um, and the, the board would like to move forward with the same process to fill a vacant spot as we did the last time, that was with, uh, Joint Board.
Yes, uh, if, if the board pleases, then we could schedule that for the next meeting...
Okay.
...when the annual appointments come out, I have the notice ready to be posted, we need to post notice of the vacancy within one week prior to the next meeting.
Okay.
And that's ready to go, if the board chooses.
So, um, first, I don't wanna brush over Ron Ozier's resignation, we thank him for his service to the community, um, at last night, uh, this is at the time this was written, on May tenth, uh, last night at our annual elections, the new chairman of the board is Ed Bertorelli, vice chair is Margaret Myatt, secretary is Marco Bontempo. This is, uh, part of the process, um, where the community should note that there is a, a opening on the Milford, uh, Library Board of Trustees, and that all interested parties would look for a notice from the, from the, uh, town administrator and the Milford Library, uh, indicating that, so if there's interest, you could respond in kind if the direction's given at the time, but we thank Ron for his service to the community, and, uh, it's not our, uh, job to accept that, since it's a separate, uh, board, but, um, the, the process for filling it would be a joint meeting between the Library Trustees and the Milford Board of Selectmen, as, as, by statute, to satisfy statute.
So it should, um, I should, well, I will, I guess, uh, as Rick alluded to, excuse me, I'll make a motion to post a vacancy, is that what we would be calling it?
Yes, yes, yes.
So that any interested parties can, can follow your direction and, uh, and apply, to be considered.
I'd second that, Mr. Chairman.
I'd also vote in favor of that unanimous. Um, next, we have a letter from Jerry Edens, the chairman, uh, chairperson of the Milford Cultural Council, um, and she writes a letter to the three of us, um, they begun to revitalize the Milford Cultural Council, as we know, that's been, um, stagnant for a while, and in, they've encountered a few issues regarding membership, uh, such as how to determine whether there's a quorum, and with assistance from, uh, town administrator Rick Vilani, we resolved the membership roster, and now know the roster includes thirteen members, so, um, you know, it's, it's a quorum of the appointed members, I, I just wanna be clear.
It is.
Um, and that is not in question, as determined by not only our current town council, but our former town council...
Right.
...and reaffirmed by our current town council, and, um, uh, Jerry asks that, uh, we approve the request to standardize the council at the, the current thirteen members, and, uh, I know there's been some questions, there've been members who can't meet, this, this meeting has, uh, these meetings have not been, um, as regular, let's put it that way, um, as, uh, other committees, and this is why they're running into the questions. I first wanna thank Jerry Edens, Edens, for, uh, her work in taking over the chairmanship of this cultural council, um, and see if it become revitalized, as she indicates, but she's looking for, uh, consensus by this board to, uh, standardize the council, and as far as I'm concerned, the vote is not necessary, but it's largely symbolic, because council's already ruled on this, um, but I'm happy to do that and ask for members to say, to agree with the cultural council's recommendation, um, that they, um, well, they, I don't wanna fix the number, it's something less than town meeting is authorized, but I wanna reaffirm, uh, their decision that, um, it's based on the thirteen, um, appointed members of the council.
Current appointed members, yeah.
Current appointed members, why don't we do it that way? Go by, based on the current appointed members, 'cause that's what the questions have been to town council.
Okay, so are we, are we going to make a motion to cap at thirteen?
No.
We're just making a motion to...
We could tomorrow, appoint more, I don't know that that would be manageable or recommended for this group at this time, um, but I would say that if there's thirteen members appointed, um, then the easiest thing to do is say that a quorum is seven, and, uh, you go by, based on the most recently appointed members.
Okay.
Or the current membership.
Right on their ask here, okay, so I guess I make a motion to approve the request to the Milford Cultural Council, to standardize the council to have thirteen members.
And that's what's currently appointed.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor of that unanimous. Next, we have a letter from, uh, State Representative Brian Murray regarding, uh, boy, you know, I, this goes back, this jogs memories, my memory of some fourteen years ago, um, it's come to my attention, he writes, uh, State Representative Murray writes, "That District Three, Department of Transportation is currently evaluating the feasibility of converting Beaver Street in Milford to two-way traffic flow. This correspondence is intended to support such a conversion. As you are aware, Beaver Street is a primary route to Bear Hill, which contains a bulk of industrial zone land in Milford, and in addition, this development has increased, the area now contains large amounts of residential subdivision as well. Having Beaver Street as one, uh, one-direction road severely restricts the access of the thriving area and places undue traffic strain in other roads of town. Prior to the present, to my present position, I served as a member of the Board of Selectmen for sixteen years, Milford, um, Beaver Street has been an issue for years in terms of responsible and comprehensive development for Bear Hill, frankly, it's amazing that Bear Hill has developed to the extent it has the present given limitations of Beaver Street access. I realize the major obstacle to the two-way flow is a negative impact that may occur on, on the I- ninety-five southbound ramps in terms of traffic buildup. This situation would, would be exacerbated at the intersection, intersection of Beaver Street, one-oh-nine, by the degree of development at Milford Crossing Plaza and surrounding areas, however, I'm confident that a thoughtfully planned design and precise traffic controls, this intersection would be reconfigured to allow for the safe, free flow of traffic in all directions." So he's indicating his full support for this, and I remember meeting with District Three in a, in a meeting where I went to Boston, uh, with then Representative Parenti, pitching this exact proposal, um, and, um, at, at the time, there wasn't an appetite for it, in part, because exactly what Brian indicated, um, that, uh, when you're that close to a federal highway, uh, federal rules are enforced, and they get very concerned that traffic is gonna queue up and back up on the off-ramps, uh, to, from four-ninety-five to, to that road, to one-oh-nine. I think there are, are ways in which, and I agree with Brian here, too, again, is that, uh, there are engineering challenges that can be overcome, and there are solutions that are possible, um, so I would, uh, agree, and, uh, I'd like to have a, a letter go back to, um, go back to State Representative Murray, uh, I'd like to have a letter go to, uh, Senator Fatman, and I'd like to have a letter go to MassDOT District Three Headquarters indicating our support, if, uh, the board members are so inclined, um, to, uh, consider this reconfiguration.
I'll make a motion to do so, um, as recommended, um, I think that's a great idea, I think a lot of this is, I don't think there was a lot of advocacy for this since the time you mentioned, back a few years ago, I think, well, many years ago, that it wasn't, um, the appetite, you know, that it didn't have the appetite, so to speak, but these projects have to be advocated for continuously in order to stay, uh, a priority, so I think it's, uh, I'm glad Representative Murray's on it, I did have a conversation with Senator Fatman about this last week as well, he is also advocating, and if a letter hasn't gone out yet, one will be shortly, so I think us showing our local support, obviously at this level, um, important thing to do.
Okay, Mike?
My, my, Mr. Chairman, before I second the motion, I think what's key, and there's a lot of key things in Brian's letter, but this, this sentence right here, "Having Beaver Street as only a one-direction road severely restricts the access to the thriving area and places an undue traffic strain on other roads in this community, in this town." There's two areas, number one, that thriving area that could be developed, uh, you know, on a commercial level, let's say, but also, as we all know, traveling in Milford all day long, that the traffic on our roads, you know, and this, leaving it as a, as a one-way road just continues to enhance that problem, instead of trying to address the problem, so, and with that being said, I would second the motion.
Okay, and, um, I would also vote in favor, and that's unanimous, so, Rick, was that clear enough?
Yes, yeah, no, I'm good.
You know, it's, okay.
Yep.
All right, um, and while we're on that topic, I'm gonna go off, uh, agenda for a moment and ask, is there any update? You know, that same intersection, Rick, this board has talked about with respect to a dedicated left going to Stop and Shop, um, and I know we've asked, uh, a town engineer to look at that and work with, uh, District Three, um, MassDOT, um, I'm wondering if we can get an update at, uh, the next meeting.
Yes, I will get one, yep.
Okay, um, okay, I should've actually brought that up under old business, but we're allowed to do this, uh, now that we're talking about it, might as well, uh, discuss that, 'cause I know we continue to have accidents at Stop and Shop, where people taking left across multiple lanes, um, okay. Next, uh, we have a letter from Ellen Murphy, interim executive director, the Milford Housing Authority. Dear Mr. Buckley, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, the Milford Housing Authority, I'm notifying the Board of Selectmen of recent resignation of Lori Ann Brazza, effective April twenty-second, uh, twenty-nineteen, Ms. Brazza is elected member of the Milford Housing Authority, her term expires twenty-twenty-four. She further goes on to say that due to a change in the Milford, uh, the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter one-twenty-one-B, the Housing Authority is now composed of three locally elected members, one governor's appointee, and one tenant member. The tenant member is to be chosen through a process established by the Department of Housing and Community Development, the department regulations for the tenant member have yet to be promulgated, um, so, they have the, they have the, they have the, uh, the, the process, or they've said what they'd like to have, but they've not given the process, um, the state is kinda lagging in that department. In the meantime, the fourth member of the board was allowed to remain as a holdover until such time the tenant member, tenant member is sworn into the position. Patrick Holland is serving as the holdover to the board, Mr. Holland was to appear on the ballot in twenty-eighteen, but after consultation with Attorney Moody, Mr. Holland remains on the board as a holdover until such time that the regulations catch up with the new general laws. The Commissioners have voted unanimously, unanimously to request Patrick Holland be appointed to fill the electoral position vacated by Lori Ann Brazza until the next annual election, um, and that they go on to say, much like the, um, Library Board of Trustees, who also have the same situation, um, that they're requesting a, a meeting with the Board of Selectmen, so that a joint meeting could fill that position, so, we have, it looks like we have two coming up, Rick?
Yes.
Okay, and there's no vote required, um, Rick, uh, just a ma- a matter of, um, meeting with them, uh, at their request, which is the way the statute reads.
The board's...
So you'll communicate with them?
Yeah, the board's okay with posting the notice of the vacancy and proceeding with a joint meeting on the seventeenth.
I'm just gonna make a motion to, to, to post, um, the vacancy, and obviously, I'm glad that they did put this in the letter, 'cause obviously, this is letting us know where the, when we have the joint meeting, where five votes are, are going to, so, unlike the Board of Library Trustees, who just let us know of vacancy, they've taken action, but this is a very interesting...
Process, right?
A process, 'cause, uh, we were talking, uh, I've just been explaining this to a couple people who've asked that, you know, they, it was during the Patrick administration that they changed the Housing Authority rules, so that's at least five to six years ago.
They've still not come up with the process.
And yet, DHCD still hasn't come up with the process on how to actually elect a tenant member, so when they do, that vacancy will be filled as well.
Okay, is there any other correspondence that members have that they'd like to get to?
I do not.
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that being said, we do have an executive session scheduled for this evening, uh, the executive session, uh, will meet with, uh, now the town administrator regarding a third-party claim against the town.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I would also vote in favor, now I'll go to a roll-call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, voting in the affirmative, we're not gonna return to open session, uh, thank you and good evening.